I'd like to call the meeting of the Town Council and City of Walsall. Thank you everyone for being here. I think we're going to be...
That might be last.
That's fine.
That sure is, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If you would please stand for the invocation. Our invocation now is going to be given by Reverend Wesley Safran. And just a way of introductions to those who may not know him. Brother Wesley was the senior member of our first-class class. He was a month older than anybody else almost. And his claim to fame is that he got most of his education at the old Walsall school. Outside of that, we have been dear friends for fifty years at least. And I'm so glad you could come tonight. He's currently the pastor of the Freeport United Methodist Church, the old side out and all. He lived out in the White Oak community, also known as Safran Vale. And comes from a hard-working family. It would be glad that you're here tonight. Would you please give our invocation?
All right. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for your blessings. And I thank you for the opportunity of being here tonight. And we just ask you your blessings on this town, this community, and especially ask you your blessings on each of the leaders of this place. And just know that your hand is upon them, and that you'll give them the wisdom to do the job that they have to do. And above all things, Heavenly Father, help them to know that everything they do is important to this community. Every word they say, every deed they do, and every decision that is made. And I thank you for guiding their hand, their mind, and their very thoughts, and the intent of them to do your will in all things. And Heavenly Father, if our whole country would do that, we would be a blessed nation. And I just want to thank you for taking this opportunity to be with these people, and just help them to make the right decisions for this community. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you join me for the pledge of allegiance? Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Wesley, for being here tonight. You're welcome to stay with us. I don't know what your schedule will let you do.
I have a date with my wife tonight.
Oh, you better not break it.
If I talk to Eddie, tell him to...
I'll probably have to take her out to lunch, so...
Thank you again for coming.
Y'all have a good meeting. We know this. At Freeport United Methodist Church, we pray for every leader in this country, every servant. So you all pray for him.
We thank you.
That's good.
All right. On the consent agenda, do you have the approval of the agenda? Is there anything to be added to it?
I've got a couple of items I need to add.
Okay.
But that's all.
Okay. Do we have to add to the agenda?
We can.
Okay.
One is Mr. Resher, Peggy Crease.
Okay.
And one is the use of the ball field.
Okay. We have two additions to the agenda. The minutes from our last meeting, financial records of the Department of Commerce, do we have our own minutes?
We do, yes.
We need to get that in the scene.
Probably safety threat.
They're too loud, for sure. They're louder than they've ever been.
Somebody had them on high.
Huh?
Somebody had them on high sound, like trying that way.
I don't, I don't know. Can you still hear that? Yeah, I hear, I hear me better than I did.
Yeah.
We're still having, but one time on library days, sometimes she would get in here, they'd load our books and twist her novels and things like that, and that could have happened again, but... Okay, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything to be added or taken from the consent agenda? Anything to be forward discussion, individually? The sheriff didn't pay a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Have you been with Walsall?
Yes, Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Sheriff, if she is. Okay, Mr. Sims is not here.
He's not going to be here. His daughter has her first ever keyball practice.
Oh, my goodness.
I hope he's as cute as...
Oh, he'll be young again.
Oh, yeah.
Raised and chilled. All right. Miss Stacy Wayo, it's been, it's been a long time, Miss Stacy. Wouldn't that have you been...
It has been. It has been. I've just got just a couple of things to hand out to you. I'm submitting a grant for some body worn cameras. Actually, let me just do that. And one of the components of the grant is a community outreach. And that's one of them. I was at, what was it? Monday night, I think it was in... I'm not even sure where I was Monday night. So anyways, I'm here tonight to just make a small, brief, real presentation to everyone about the Body-Worn Camera Grant. It is a... We've all seen the change in the culture in the United States lately, and decided to take, we decided to take the opportunity to participate in this, in this grant application process. It is sponsored by the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Body-Worn Camera Partnership Program. And this is going to be implemented for our deputies and investigators. Legislative changes have, excuse me, yeah, the changes have been experienced across our nation, making body worn cameras almost mandated in states. So therefore, we're applying for this grant because accountability, transparency, safety, and trust with our citizens' perception of law enforcement is important to sheriff crews. And I'd like to ask for your support if we could get a letter from the, from the town that we can include it with the grant application.
Do you further request from Miss Wayo, supporting the grant for the body worn cameras? Plus the pleasure of council?
How many cameras are we ever getting?
Fifty.
Wow.
So that'll be, that'll be plenty for all of the deputies and school resource officers and investigators.
Can you request just for a letter of support?
Yes, sir. Please, sir.
Yeah. It's better for Stacy to come. Kevin, Kevin, take home some money. She just wants to live.
I don't have a problem with that. Marcy, do you want to write the letters?
I can write that letter. Someone has to write the letter.
Okay. I agree.
That motion?
Donna made the motion. I agree.
We have a motion and second. If we contributed a letter of support to the Sheriff's Department for Body-Worn Cameras for our officers, any discussion on the motion? Have you been with Carter?
Yes.
And Walsall? And Sheriff, if she is.
Thank you very much. And good evening.
Well, just send this to your office, just to this address or something?
Yes. That'd be fine. Or you can...
I'll leave it.
Emails go. Okay, that'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. It's good to see you again.
It's good to see y'all. Thank you, Stacy. You're welcome. Thank you all.
That brings us all the way down.
Thanks. Good day.
And when it's signed in, that brings us all the way down to the clerks.
Okay, your last month for code enforcement update. On 2769, that was one of the properties that have been code enforcement for Washington County. What you're going to contact the bank. The bank has contacted their management company. And that management company will be in here to clean that property up. Now, when is she going to tell me that? But they will be in here.
What property are you talking about?
Across from Ms. Penny Nichols down there, the Duck Dolls house.
Don't think she'll be there?
No. They gone, it's in foreclosure. The bank takes them again. They first did the buy.
Is what you're reading from in our booth?
Yes, sir. Right, right. This is the way back, back before the bank statement. Courtesy matters were mailed to the bottom residence, Dennis Dupree at D. Sixty-sixth Avenue. Ms. Mary Spence, twenty-seven sixty-two Jefferson Street, West Numba, Matthew's Estate, which is the Godea property, the Melvin property on Fifth Avenue and Jefferson Street, and Joey and Nichols. If you looked around on these, Joey Nichols is doing an excellent job of cleaning up. The Matthew estate, those have been mostly cleaned up. Has not hurt anything on Ms. Mary's fences, but Mr. Dupree, he came in, he will be cleaning his up. Along with that, he is moving out of town. That property is being foreclosed on.
Where's these at?
The shop and our sixth avenue.
His shop on...
Exactly. Yeah. He's going to be moving out of town.
He is that room?
Is he going to stay close around?
He'll probably close around. He's going to get out of town. Somehow or another, it's got into foreclosure. I don't know exactly how. That's what he told me.
The Matthew estate, is that going to be the two that's across the street from the roof and chimney?
Yes. If you go by there, you'll see that those doors have been very cleaned up.
I didn't go by this afternoon, but earlier in the week, they've been pulled up in a pile. Because the pile is gone.
Not yet, but they will be gone. I'm sure one of the virgins are to get here.
I don't like them.
I don't really know with this.
So, so what does this say to each of those? I've seen the Joey Nichols, he's actually entered just now when he came in.
Yes, yes.
He was working. Which of those on Jefferson now is mayor? Is the one that faces... There's just one on Jefferson.
Right now, there's more of the letters need to go out to, because these letters have been affected. You know, we got some more that's Mr. Lawrence property. When I understand from talking to Teresa this week, they will be demolishing the old cafe soon. You know, doing that property, as you've seen, they got the sign up on the, on the block down there.
They going to drive in the old cafe?
Yes.
Trying to make sure that somebody got a picture of that from the upstairs.
I need to make sure we get a racetrack somewhere.
That's a man rocking down in our court there.
I know. I remember that. I was bored a little bit today.
But you know him riding through Walsall, that street down there, it looks a hundred percent bad. From all the way from where that whole block's for sale to the rest of it, it looks a hundred percent... Well, maybe ninety percent, okay? But it looks...
They're doing extra job cleaning up.
He's on Jefferson there?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they, it looks good. Better not sign it, maybe it's better than you know.
And we do not have an update unless Marcy has one on the Green Tombs property. We have not, I know code enforcement is working on it, but they don't have an update for that.
They've sent letters.
Yeah, that's about it there.
On which one?
Green Tombs.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's terrible.
They have done some, but it's kind of scratched. It's Willis, they're an improvement, but there's more needs to be done. On Ms. Spence.
Oh, they just finished?
I don't...
I think that's mostly that back lot that needs to be done somewhere.
But what I do think, the front, it may be on, it may be on the Matthew pile, but the front, that's something done to it. Just on that fence and all that.
Yeah, that's back there.
Okay. Is the Dupree property in his name?
No, it's still in, which one's his name?
Ms. Dupree's name. Would we as a council, since like years ago, maybe even when George was still living, still certainly, since like years ago, that we, we did, maybe Ellen user, I'm not sure who it was back then, our management people. But if folks, and we, we have numerous people in Walsall that are over, or not good helping on that, if they put it out next to the roof, we pick it up.
Daddy's going out in the newsletter. Daddy, if they have good people getting their items that they want to get rid of, trim the dumpsters to put them on the right away, we will get them.
Yeah.
They're not one week on.
Well, okay.
We don't have a...
We could have any other time. We'd have to do something with it.
But as far as like household debris and all that, we can get that.
During that week, if they would lay it out there, and we have an inmate now. Continue to have inmates, and we could take a trailer, and somebody got something there, if they get it out next to the highway, and they could help get it all around here to these dumpsters. Is, is that be all right if we do that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Then the dumpsters come four times a year. Is that incorrect?
I just sort of say if somebody does something, and we see them do it now, they do it in three months, do it again, we can make a thing. Well, they're trying to do it.
A lot of people start doing it like every week.
We'll just have to stop them.
I don't think we could do that.
No, we can't do that. Because we don't have the storage space. They get the store, told the dumpsters from that.
See, if they did it every week, we piled it back here, and then folks would be fussing about how to see how it was. Be a mountain of washing machines.
And that's what we put in the newsletter when it goes out, that during the week that the dumpsters are here, if you put your stuff out, if you're unable, some of them don't have a truck, some of them don't have a trailer, and some are just not able, we'll get it, you know, put it in the dumpsters.
They, they need to call us for lots of stuff that's down there. If you put a load out today, we can call it off, and you've got another load tomorrow, in that same week.
It's in that week?
If it's in that week, we'll come back and get a second load.
Well, it's like you, Judy, if you had a whole bunch of stuff that you needed to put out, you couldn't bring it all to these dumpsters, you know? Not unless Jasper stopped and had to.
No, you'd have to bring a trailer.
Yeah. Any things that will help you get it started? And I, I, no, you may have seen, I went through Facebook, my wife sees it, she monitors it.
I stopped it. I don't know if I stopped it.
Well, I, yes, stopped it, but we had some, we had some things on Facebook about three or four weeks ago. And it's really sad that none of those people are here tonight to see that we are doing things and that we have done things. And even before that stuff was on the Facebook, we'd done some and hedging, doing enforcement, sure, starting with it.
And when the newsletter goes out, there's a statement in there, which is my own statement. It was not anybody else's on this count, but you know, if, you know, if you will come to us with your questions and concerns and problems, we'll be glad to listen, rather than posting on social media where we can't answer, you know? It's not, it's not our place to answer, go back forth with somebody on social media.
It's not, it's not true in the public eye, though. We can expect somebody's going to be...
Oh, yes, they are, yes.
Somebody being happy with us sometime or another.
We can, nobody can please everybody and everything to do. That's just, and that ain't, we don't live in a perfect world on that thing of that. I mean, it works.
My husband asked me to put on the agenda animal control pet restoration, to see if we need to continue this, or we need to revise our orders not to leave this. We are having no success with this. We get about ten dollars a year, and we spend about two hundred, you know, sending out letters each September for them to rest their pets, you know? It's just not, it's not win over and it's not, and we have not enforced it, you know? So that, that needs to be discussed. And it may not be acted on tonight. We may wait till April when Mr. Carter's here, but just be on your radar what we need to do with that.
Does the, does the ordinance have enforcement clause in it?
I don't know if it has enforcement clause on the restoration or not, but I can look at that and see.
We need to, we need to know the active clause, because you know, it hasn't been, we don't want to... We may, we may need to have another system, but we don't want to get back for the next time we come full circle, and we got people sitting out here, about stray dogs and cats running around town.
We haven't, we haven't had any since our local accounting, because as soon as you get a call about one, they're ready to hit them, you know?
So what, in answer to a question, Ms. Marcy, how many people percentage would you say that registers their pets?
Less than five.
Less than five cents. So it's costing the town more to do that than what the town... It's costing the town to do that because it ain't enforced. And ain't no way you can mandate people having animals in their house. I know four, five, six that got seven, eight, and I know they don't register. And so, you know, don't say in third to the dog to do to five percent, you know? So I don't know. I just, I just throw that out, so you know what I mean? It just ain't... If they don't, if it's costing the town more to do it, I think we need to go away with it. I'm just saying it, using the word it. I mean, I don't see no use in it. But now, everyone's got different opinions, but I mean, at five percent, that ain't, that ain't a high percentage whatsoever.
Maybe we need to put this on the agenda for the April meeting, so the April meeting...
Something for...
Time in, because I don't know what kind of responsibility we have for things like that to do. It's kind of like if I can make somebody tend up their yard, I can make them buy a color for their dog or something. If you can legislate things, then you got to enforce it.
Well, that's true. I have the ordinance in your package for the April meeting. I was, Mr. Carter will be here at the April meeting, and I'll make sure we know to address this. And I'll send him a call. Okay. Ms. Tiller, she's on hospice, but she's got some cemetery logs that she would like to sell back to the city. And I think there's three of them, Ms. Marcy?
Yeah, there's like two or three.
Co- three logs that she wants to sell back to the city.
Which one's two?
Mary Tiller. She's not going to be buried here.
That's Son's wife. Who's Son's wife?
She's on hospice, and she was on her decision pretty quick, I don't know.
He's not buried here?
He isn't.
Okay. I was thinking he was put here too.
No, Mr. Mr. Harper buried it. Dog was a small table. And now, she was Roy Harper's daughter. The Harpers are over there. And that may be, is that the log she's talking about?
I said, she said they were in her name, but I, I don't really know.
Might be Mr. Harper number, and I think they got three sons.
They do have several sons.
Did she buy them, or is that, did she get them, want to do a big giveaway?
She bought them for two hundred dollars, and she would like to get three hundred out of them.
She bought them for how much?
Two hundred a piece.
She can't speak to...
Two hundred a piece.
And will sell them back to us for a hundred a piece?
No, three hundred a piece.
She wants to get three hundred out of them.
Three hun... Three hundred a piece?
We have...
That's what the going rate is for the lots.
No, if you buy them now...
If you buy them.
Yeah, they're three hundred a piece now, you know?
We haven't bought any back for what we sold them for.
We bought them after what we sold them for.
But not in the Christmas.
I'm actually buying for two hundred, for two hundred fifty. Do you think you're looking for this selection? I'll look back on the dates and see what you can come on.
It was either two, I believe it was two hundred, but it could have been fifteen fifty.
You would never know.
It's going to dig here up here. It wasn't top priority. But I will find out. And you know, if y'all continued on where they're at, you know, if y'all want to do something, continued on that price, we will cover and make our offer on.
We bought back some. We have moved away and things like that, but we just, it was like giving their money back.
Yes, sir, that's what we did.
Because they've had to use, they've had to use it all the time. They haven't had to use it, but it's been there available for them, so they get it and make back. They've had all that time that they could have used it, didn't.
Well, you know, you wouldn't really want to give more than they paid for it, or you know, if I was selling one myself, I'd, I'd just want my money back, or I may not even want it back. But I'm just saying, you don't go down there and buy lots and keep them to gain money on them. I mean, that's not sounding too good to me. That's my opinion. I mean, that's just my opinion.
I share that. It's not like a piece of real estate.
No.
It's not like you're buying something in business, you're buying it for a person.
Yeah, I mean, I don't quite understand that.
I'm sure she'd be open to an offer, you know? If we say, we're going to give you, if we'll make an offer, give you your money back for this one.
She'd take it.
I'm excited. She, she's just trying to see if she can get more, you know?
Do we want to authorize Harper to make that counter offer back to her, the motion to, that we would buy back, but our practice has been, did we buy back from what they sold for?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll sure.
Have you been with Carter?
Yes.
Sheriff, if she is.
Okay. Metric Engineer, oh, you got something else?
No, I was saying, if, if you know someone who's looking for lots, and I'm like, Dave, you may tell them that she's got some, and she makes up an individual with that motion.
Agent on Seventy-seven, this one's in the bus just wide open. Metric Engineer about the contracting, all utility work through town, okay, so they have the three, three-foot project. Eighteen D's already doing their bores with Florida Electric's moving all the power holes in town and on Seventy-seven. But they would like, if they can't find a place to rent here in town for their office for that period of time, and they wouldn't set up an office here, but just to have their weekly meetings with the contractors, could they use the town hall for that? I told them, I said, we've done that before, but we haven't, you know, as soon as, we haven't had anything through here in a while, you know?
They had a three-year project, haven't they?
No, we haven't. And they might find something they might even need, if you know?
Young women in the city hall.
I told them that Tuesday was out, though. They didn't drive.
I know Chief is not part of it anymore. Chief probably has given, I know, services to rent, rent the building.
They could probably be giving our free services to own the building.
And I wouldn't, and I would be surprised, but would y'all and others in the course of the year just know that they're here and all like that? We wouldn't be tapped into some of that.
That's probably, I would present it to y'all.
Once a week, or?
It'll probably be about once a week that they will make it.
If, my opinion is, I don't care if I'm doing, if they do it on the hours, we don't have to do, you know, accommodate them.
Right. And they would be here in the office hours.
So I'll tap there here when y'all are here, and I'll get out.
Okay.
I don't see nothing wrong with it, for sure.
It's all right with you.
Okay. New CDBG project. Where eligible now since we closed out our CBG project to apply for another project. I discussed with Mr. Fox and John with DeBarry, and with Roger, you know? The Roger family was so generous to give us that property up there, you know? That's a, I always send you several fronts, half of, you know, it's a good piece of property. The thing with these CDBG grants, you only have about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of construction monies. Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars this thing in town doesn't go anywhere far, you know? There's, my thoughts on it is we could redo that building up there. We might could even add to that building some. We could do like we wanted to do with the possum palace, put some garage doors where we can open it up or close it down. And central heat, that size will be a little bit central heating there, that will. Put some perimeter fencing, and maybe a piece of playground equipment out there for the kids to play on, or some picnic tables in there. Jonathan seems to think that's a great idea. That would probably, you know, be... think that's a great idea. That would probably, you know, be, uh, be feasible. We could also spend that money. It should be so lucky to get the money to replace our existing halogen lights at the ball field with LED lights. Um, there's some other projects we could do, you know. We cannot use any of CBD G money on the possum palace building at all for five years.
Wow.
Kind of. That's a new rule that's come down on that.
So if the legislative thing don't work?
We don't work.
We're just gonna have a, we're just gonna have a high completed project with possum palace.
So I sent Roger a list of legislatures that's on the committee for the House, and we need to get to contacting those people. We're on the list. I have pulled the list up. We're on both, both the House and the Senate list of funding, you know, and. But, you know, that's what, we need to, to choose us a project, and see if it doesn't let you know. But these projects, we have to do this, hold all the public hearings, and have our application with engineering laws submitted by May deal. We need to choose a project, or a couple of projects, you know, and see which one the engineers and the grant man think is most useful for us to do.
The first thing you mentioned, the, the Roger property. That could be, that could be the community center that we didn't get here that we wanted. That could be that if we used, if it would go that way. Uh, it could be what we decided to start renting to people to use rather than City Hall.
Yes.
With maintenance here, or something like that, upkeep and all. Might could be listed, and it could be moved down there. I do think that I know, or I suspect that, uh, not that I know, I suspect that if we ever started putting it out, it's going to have some ADA bathrooms and a few things like that. Uh, we, we, in our budget, we won't ever, we're living in, it will be years before we can ever use that building. We can do it out of our own budget. So that would be, that would be a good plus for that. Don't know how much the lights would save, the LEDs versus the halogens. I don't know. That, that would be a power bill to save.
The lights are not that, there's not that much on there, you know.
Of those two things, I think, I think that the, getting that piece of property and to use would be good. We can, we can do the walk, like you said, that we can do like a high wall and lax it in or something like that.
That would be great.
For some kind of use and all that.
Yeah, that was a very generous offer from the family. And, and they expect us to use that building, you know. And that would be, my feeling is, that would be our best project with the monies we have.
Well, you know, that, that would be, to me, this is me, that would be the ideal thing to do. I, I would, I'd like to get the town hall away from having family reunions at town hall and have it, and future could be down there. And, and, you know, that's just me now. You know, everybody's different, so, uh, uh.
There'd be, you know, some old room, a little more room.
Yeah, and it'd be, you know what, yeah, it would.
Is it bigger than City Hall?
It's only about that.
It's not quite, it may be a little longer.
Longer, yeah.
It's gonna be, probably it's gonna be about the same.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't have to, to make them, and get everything that's in here that doesn't go out when you try to use it, you know?
Yeah. We, we are, we are careful, and, and one day, we're going to have a problem because our families got, we, we always use it, and our family's got small children that are, I wouldn't say they're not disciplined, but they're very random.
They're not disciplined. They're not, but they need to be.
Since, since it's your family today, we, they're not disciplined.
If they're wrong made, it'd be.
And one day, they're gonna, they're gonna knock that thing over. They've already, and, and your wife comes down, looks at time now, takes this down. I don't know if she does it for you, but when she knows we're coming, we're gonna lock the quill down. So I know my family'd do it. Already have somebody else's family to do it. My family will do it. And if we, if we use that as our place for showers, maybe showers, mid showers, family reunions, something.
For play parties.
And if you look on the ceiling right now, we got somebody use it this weekend, and we specifically told them, they think they're not, but what you see red on the coat, you see where the good tape on the lights, you know, that's not what we want in here, you know?
And if we equip it with tables and chairs, identify those tables and chairs, and they don't be linted out, don't be anything like that. Make it, make it be available for the people if they're gonna use it, and make it be available. And things like that. Coming in here just working on that kitchen. I don't know if the location schools do it, doesn't, but you know, they're carpentry class and some things like that, they should do work for families and cities. They might be coming in here to renovate that thing, but then, well, I guess it probably got a good sink and all like that, but wouldn't.
You'd have to remodel it, wouldn't you?
How old are they?
I, I think you would, Jimmy. I think you would. But I think if we can get somebody from the state, that would be a good place to spend it, because I just don't see our budget here for to have about a hundred thousand dollars.
And we've got a valuable piece of property.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking. It'd be ideal to start renovating it, or if we can, and fixing it up and make it look pretty. That'd be ideal. It's an ideal location, everything. To me, I mean, this is just me. I mean, but yeah, that'd be good.
And, and that's what John thinks, and John thinks it's a good project anyway?
Mm-hmm. Filing on the, setting up election.
Is this the one that we're having here on in two weeks?
We've got to make a decision on our project tonight.
If we're, if we kind of think that's a good project, you, you need a motion for the Minister.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If, if a sheriff and a town motion, if that's, or, or for either, either of the projects, but that's what we're about, the sheriff and a town motion to, to tell John that's our project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Motion by Ms. Carter, second by Ms. Walmsley.
I'll say.
Any discussions? Ms. Walmsley?
No, nothing.
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And Sheriff, she is. Okay.
Okay. We have a list of the Citizens Task Force members. This is a revised, uh, Ms. Robin Jones, Mr. Tom Taylor, Mr. Joanna Carter, Mr. Troy Landry, Ms. Holly Finch, and Ms. Rebecca Owens. All these, uh, and you see where I've got over LMI, of this community, fifty-one percent has to be low to moderate income. And that's, we pick our citizens carefully for that, you know, and because this is the, this is the people that it will benefit the most, you know?
What is this?
Citizens Task Force. It's a, we have, the last time this, uh, Nancy used to be on it years ago. But when we apply for a CBD G grant, we present this to our citizens that's on this task force, uh, to see, you know, if they'll give support for this project. And then they, they present their, you know, to the council that recommend the project, you know. We'll also present this to the fire department, to the garden club, you know, for support for the project, you know.
It's, it's one of the, they represent the community, it's one of the community would say this is a good project.
It's a good project.
Yes, it's, it's kind of like what Stacy done while they go, the hoop.
We need a hoop.
Yes, a hoop. Yes, a hoop. Uh, and that, that LMI, low to moderate income, what's the, what's the, what's the income cutoff?
Low to moderate would be somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand a year, you know?
I know all of those except, uh, Mr. or Ms. Finch, Holly is a lady's name, I'm saying.
Yes, my, my brother's wife. They're very low.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. Years ago, the council kind of, when there were lighthouse or somebody that would do it with that law change, and Nancy served two or three, two or three grants back in the nineties or something back there, but.
And we had to revise this list because Mr. Darnold was on this list, and we, and I said, we had to get a new revised list. All these members stayed the same except for Ms. Johns and Ms. Finch.
Okay, and they replaced who? John and?
And, uh, they moved out of town. I have to live there on her, because they love them all.
How many do we have on this board? Six?
Six.
How many, is that an element, or is it four?
We usually have six. This one, we've always had, you know?
Don't think there's a limit. You need to add somebody?
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah. And all these are considered too?
Yes, sir. I've already talked to them all. They will, they will be here.
The sheriff and a town motion, that we approve the Citizens Advisor Task Force, awarded to Mr. Fox.
This being Fred, yeah.
Fred Fox.
They'll be up here to do these meetings.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say. We have a motion, and second, any discussion on the motion? Sheriff votes yes. Ms. Walmsley?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay, we need to set some meetings. The only meeting that the council will need to attend is a public hearing and a fair housing workshop. We need a whole Citizens Task Force meeting, and we can do these with one motion on March thirtieth at four P.M. A public hearing on CBD G cycle, March thirtieth at four thirty P.M., and a fair housing workshop, March thirtieth at five P.M.
Thirtieth is?
On the Thursday.
You think we do all of that in a hour?
Yes, sir.
You see who goes on that task force?
Yeah, they need before y'all do. They all stand for the meetings. We thank them to hear their spiel.
Yeah, but three and four, we eat lunch in about thirty minutes. But Fred will be here, or somebody?
No, that's somebody here.
They, uh, they chair that meeting. They can guide, they can guide the meeting.
Yeah, they chair all three meetings.
Okay. Uh, we need a motion to set, uh, public hearing and public workshops for, uh, four, four thirty, and five o'clock on March the third, in the evening.
Two weeks, you said?
Four thirty, five o'clock.
Citizens Task Force at four, public hearing at four thirty, and the fair housing workshop at five.
Now, the public hearing, that's all we can do, that even if we can't, if we can't, it's not, it's not.
It'll take about five minutes, you know?
Yeah.
But do we, if you, do we as the council need to be here all at four o'clock?
No, at the four thirty, five.
The four thirty, I think. I'd assure you, no one will be. Okay, and I'd be quiet. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, is there, is there a motion to set these meetings?
Yes, I've made that motion.
We have a motion and a stamp. I have a motion and a statement. Hey, you, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
The sheriff votes yes for four.
Yes.
Okay. The spring cleanup's going to be the week of March twenty-fourth, that's on a Friday. The doctor will be here Friday afternoon, and they'll be here till Monday morning, April third. So you'll need to get your stuff here, and we'll send it out in his letter.
I'm stacking mine up now. You reckon you give somebody to pick mine up?
We always got a pile.
They, they, they should, of course, you can't order the little game.
And I got, and like I said, I have two more items to add to the list.
Okay.
Uh, as you know, our golf season was canceled before because of, you know, we didn't get the kids, enough kids on each team to make a team of anyone's X group. Uh, we had a request from the, from Vernon. They are having to stack their practices, someone practicing as late as eight o'clock. And I told them, I did not think it would be a problem. I thought it would be a great idea if they could use some of our fields to practice on. And they even sent some games over here where we can make some money from our concession equipment, since we don't have any, many games this year, you know?
Well, to me, you know what, that's my pastime, because, you know, I miss not having softball and baseball. I'm not no soccer fan, but a lot of people are, but I'm not. But anyway, I, you know, I wouldn't see no problem with that. It'd give me something to do sometimes at night instead of watching television. I mean, I mean, I don't watch television much, so I, it'd be good for me. I'll put it that way. That's all I think I'd say.
And our insurance, you know, each team bears their own insurance that I like, if you still cover anything that happened down there.
And I'm guessing they would just prefer it.
Yeah. I make it a point.
And for the children, and, and to go down and watch the little teams and I get, yeah, I feel your liking towards them, but, but I am told that we may not be having some walks off because of some things that Vernon, people did.
I think that's a.
If that's the case.
That's a conflict between two individuals.
Is there any merit to it?
I don't know. I don't think so.
In that case, let's not discuss it.
Because I talked with Steve this afternoon, and I said, I don't want to go over your head or anybody else's head or run this up. He said, be morally glad for them to come and use our fields and, you know.
Okay, do you, uh, do you need a motion?
All of that one.
Yeah, yeah. We always do this backwards. We always discuss, and then we make a motion. Uh, is, is there a motion that we, uh, that we share our facilities with the Vernon Recreation Program?
Yeah, I, I make a motion we do. I mean, that's me now. I mean, everybody's waiting too much.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I say.
We have a motion and a second. Hey, you, Ms. Walmsley?
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes. Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay. The last thing I have, is Mr. Register approached me today. He would like to increase his, due to inflation and price of the gas on it, to increase his compensation for his contract number for two, for one hundred dollars per month. This was not discussed at voting time. He did not bring it up at voting time.
How much are paying me now?
Sixteen hundred dollars a month.
That's a lot.
Keep the law.
He comes three days a week to take the wheels. But I thought about what presenting to y'all tonight.
Over, over the years, and it's not that it's impossible to do, or that maybe we have done, I don't remember instances in, in the town that changed their subscription or had some use or something like that. But if you set a budget and you've got a salary or, or any other line item, if you change that, you've got somewhere else to find money to do it in there, uh, I would, I would be glad for him to submit his request, the budget making time, which is only going to be about three, three months now before we start doing some budget stuff. We would start it all until August or September, but, uh, you should put out management budgets occasionally. We'd have, we'd have the board who decided to give a raise, and we had to travel around. And then if you give that raise because of inflation, you would need to give other big raises because of inflation. It just football, it just been a bigger.
Well, the inflation's from all over here. It's not, I, I don't know, can.
And the CPI, it actually has come down a couple times unless you were changing our time for a second year, but it, the CPI, the board, it's a nice amount, it is a long time.
Well, you know, we can always table the requests of the fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four budget year, you know, or which you, whatever you don't want to do. That's your office. That's why I'll be like, big love.
And he, and we pay him sixteen hundred dollars a month.
Yes, sir.
Good, great. No, I, I'd be against it. Personally, I, and I, I'll make a motion that I think I would be, no.
To table a request of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah.
Table it to the next special. We have a, we have a request to table, Mr. Register's request until. We have a, we have a request to table. Mr. Register's request until, uh, which is town 23, 24. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Sheriff votes she is. Hey, you, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the last thing I have. And it's, uh, from me, as dear all the mayor and council members, please accept this as notification that I'm planning on retiring September 30th, 2023. I've enjoyed my 26 plus years with the town of Lawson. Ever I feel it's time to let somebody else take over my position, I am currently working only 16 hours a week and feel that I am not doing all that I need to do for our town, or at least not as well as I would like to do. I feel that I'm not being fair to the council or the town. I will always support the town of Lawson and will be available to assist with anything that needs my attention.
I recommend that we refuse that though.
I was gonna say, what made you decide on self-treatment?
That's the end of the fiscal year.
Why don't you stay another couple of years?
Thoughts of state.
You like being off two days, just working two days a week?
I do, but I don't feel that I'm doing enough to.
Well, you give me more.
I'm ready.
I know, I'll give you more hours, you know. But, yeah, and Eddie wants to be home.
Yeah.
Johnny needs to be home more and, you know, I know there'd be, you know, and Roger's got me checking with you. I called some things that I could come in, OPIAs on the grants and stuff like that. We've got so many grants going that we're going to have to have a lot of, you know, yeah. We, uh, uh, you know, you're not going to learn these grants in a year. You're not going to learn these grants in five years. I still have that this morning, you know? It's more of the obstacle than somebody, you know? But, you know, you could hire, you're paying $20 an hour. You come up here 16 hours a week. You could hire somebody for $28 a week. You could still, you know, be under watching paying me for two days, you know?
We probably knew when Margaret started talking a couple of years ago about the, and especially after Eddie was, I'm happy to retire from his job. Probably just temporarily, probably thought it would go away, thought that she's a favorable tool after she stayed at home with Eddie a few days.
It probably will.
This was probably one of the major transitions that the town's gone through when we have an election and one or two might go off the board. Somebody else coming on, you've always had one or two, and you always had a constant, it didn't take long for others to get along with it, but, uh, with Margaret, just the institutional knowledge that she has, uh, going back into the last century, we, uh... Marcy, you might have to crank it a little.
Now, I can hear Marcy's doing excellent and, you know, she will feel honored.
I got here a little earlier while I do. I, I asked Margaret, are there any other options? And, and we know as managers that two days and if you go to one day, by the time you come in, turn around twice, go to lunch, snap on coffee, I don't think we can, we can get anything out of it in one day, anything that's, you know, productive.
Basically, how I'm doing now is just the branch, you know? I keep up with getting the bills paid and the deposit, uh, Marcy does all the deposits for the town now, uh, but I keep up with getting the bills paid and the financials, you know, and, but, you know, grants is about what I do in two days' time, you know? Now, I'm working every day next week, you know, but... And Marcy will like to talk about some of all she would like to do in the future, you know? She's very comfortable with the water system. She's very good at the water system. I don't think she ever aspires to be the town clerk. She was still wants to be the utility clerk and she may change her mind in six months, you know, but she may want to be just everything, you know?
So, when you think we just have Marcy's utility clerk in our town?
We're gonna have to hire somebody. We're gonna have to talk somebody that will take the, the title or, or I can do the work, you know? Yeah, we'll hire somebody, you know, somebody who will have this job. Y'all play excellent, you know?
Oh, that's good.
The, uh, benefits, you know, you're not going to get rich working for the town of Lawson, but you're going to get the same amount every week. And you've got a lot of retirement and you've got insurance, you know?
You never had a shit bounce, have you?
Not yet.
Never had to wait for payroll?
No, there was some few bounce before I got here.
Yeah. I, it's going to, it's going to be a, a transition. It's going to be a root, it's going to be a relevant thing too, because she's going to be doing what she's doing, like she's teaching Marcy or beginning to tie the blue sense and things like that, uh... I would, just as much as I, I would like a very, very thorough report on all, all the funds in the budget and all the grants that you're doing, uh, anything that we've got open, uh, out like that, uh... Be a good time again for a solicitor, a job description to see if there are things that needs to be added or modified.
Okay, that may modify in a month. I mean, utility building clerk was modified, you know, they stepped up.
I think we may have even modified the, uh, the maintenance people.
We have.
When, when we did that too, uh, we're going to need somebody who's going to be responsible for our maintenance people, uh, supervisor, if that's the word, or whatever. That's, that's kind of all Margaret is.
And, you know, Marcy will take over more roles than just the utility clerk. She's, she's excellent with working with the people. She's excellent with working with the employees. And she doesn't have a problem telling them, you know, we have more workers than we've ever had before, but things are getting done, you know, and she's, she's very good at that. And I don't usually turn somebody else's horn, but, you know, she's, she's doing the...
Why don't, why don't you teach her? Hold on.
Well, I, I enjoy what I do and I enjoy helping Margaret in any way I can and assist her. And I told her I'm, I would love to learn the quick books and, you know, any of that that I can learn to do. Um, I just feel like the role that I'm in right now as utility building clerk is, I, I feel really good about it. I feel that, that's where I want to be. And, um, the, the tail clerk position is, it's a little intimidating because I see now, like, all of what she does and, and those are really big shoes to fill. And, um, and I, I do want to learn. I want to be able to cross train because I understand that that is two full-time positions, the utility clerk and, um, the tail clerk position. And I can definitely see all of why it is two full-time positions or 28 hours. Um, but I, like I said, I think, I feel like that they need to be cross-trained, like both positions. And she has to try, and she is doing that with me. And, um, you know, but, um, I like what I do and I'm starting to get a little more comfortable with it. And I like, um, the amount of time that I get to help our citizens here, um, on the phone. I'm on, on the phone all day long and I'm taking the payments and answering questions and, uh, like she said, doing work orders, um, making sure that, um, the 77 project, they turn in those eight, eight 1-1 digging projects. I'm trying to stay on top of that and just making sure everything's, I'm taking care of and thinking, like I said, I want to assist her or whoever will be in that position in the future, but, um, you know, it's, it's definitely a two-people job. Two, two full-time people job.
You know, some little times I've been, and I don't stay in City Hall too much and y'all know that, but the times that I'm here, even when I come to eat lunch with Shirley, that phone is constantly ringing. And, and you know, it does, it flat does. And, and I compliment y'all, Margaret, and, and for, you know, it, I could see where it's two, two-people's jobs or that phone is consistently ringing the times that I'm around.
And it is, and the janitorial part, you know, that takes time too, but just making sure that, you know, that the customers are taken care of and, and then we get back with them because, you know, the worst thing you can do is not call them back and, and let them know that they're trying to be helped. So, and I try and make us, us stay on top of that.
When you talk about quick books, that's the computer program?
Yeah, it's, it's simple, it's simple.
If you divided the two roles, one primarily finance, that means, um, accounts payable, accounts payable, that means taking it to the bunny, that means paying out the bills and things like that. And secondly, was administrative, that would be nins, grants, calling the clerk school and things like that, because the clerk, I think, has to be, don't you have to?
We don't. We don't have to be certified. It's good to be certified. You know, I got certified years ago. Y'all send me, but as far as, we don't have to, I don't really depend on education.
Something by the state or something that requires us to do.
No, there's not.
But whatever, whatever else there is to do, uh, for the next three years, it'd be 77 and things like that, uh, but there still won't have to be enough cross-training that, uh, if somebody called in about a bill or about a receipt or something like that, the others are going to have to be, go for the fine.
Yes, Dad. Everybody that's in here will have to know how to take the water bill, take a payment, take a credit card, uh, you know, do a life application, you know? Most of them, to tell the truth, I haven't done a life application. Marcy does all this. My time should be back.
For a while, there's enough working dogs and biting dogs and down garbage and things like that. You'd better keep one person full-time. We do get some help with code enforcement and we do get some help with animal control. Some of that may lessen, but it, it won't go away. Well, you've done the hard part. You submitted the letter.
Uh, it was tough.
I've, I've had to, I've had to do letters like that.
I was tough.
Just tear my heart out, but it's time to move on. If it's time for you to move on, you, you're gonna... But then the hard part's on this is to make sure that we...
Except for with fiscal, you know, except for with the third sitting fiscal year, which would be at the end of my, you know, financial responsibility as far as the audit and offer this year, you know?
I did ask Margaret when she, when I got the letter, would she, uh, talk to Mr. Carter and see, could we retain her in some kind of OPS to close out the grants that we're working on now? I don't think we want to continue, and if she goes into business like Mr. Fox, I don't, I don't think we want to continue to use her. If we're going to have a clerk, they need to learn grants and going forward, they would need to do it. But until we close out the ones that we're, you know, up our necks in now, uh, and the reason I asked her to find out could we do that is because one time we tried to do this at the county level. We was wanting, you know, offered this, offered somebody a job as a contractor and we weren't, had the cost to be a contractor. That means you're working for other people and like that, just cause you're for a bush, you're just on a contract. That's in the government definition, in the government definition. So, uh, if there's some way we could do an OPS, which means that she works for, for a dollar amount only, no benefits and things like that, she's just, uh, just a, a personal service employee, uh, we might could do something like that. But then that, that was just like for, for Mr. Register, we'll have to find a meeting to pay for some of that. And most of the grant money is already taken over with engineers and...
And administrations. And, you know, that, that may not even be necessary when we, if we find the right person, you know? There's people out there that, you know, like other municipalities or something that's burst up well and, and, you know, what goes on, you know? And, you know, we have excellent grants, many engineers that can guide anybody through, you know? We're closing out.
Few letters this time last year made you mad off.
We're closing out. Um, we've put, we've got the CBD G fossil powers closed down. We're closing out two of the burnout grants by April 30th. We will be well into, now these two strange projects and the oil projects, once we ever get through the hoops of D E O of getting the environmental reviews done, those grants will go flying at speed because they're just simple, small grants, you know? And Marcy's going to start, you know, stepping in on the bi-weekly meetings with the state, you know, and all that, you know?
Okay, back it up. It's a moment, uh, the session we come to here right away. Is there, is, and, and I know that for the longest, the first part is for the longest part, it'll be clear in the eyes of way moving on life like that. Is, is us paving our roads going to interfere with them paving their road?
They're saying not only response, we've got back from the environmental reviews that we're, we're working on, you know?
When you advertise for this job, what area did you just put it in local pavement?
Uh, we're gonna put it on our website and we're gonna put, uh, I talked with Paul about it this afternoon. He said it would be a good thing to maybe pay for a Facebook ad. Facebook is a lot of the sponsor. But we're gonna put it on our website. We're gonna put it with One Stop. We're gonna check with other municipalities to see if they got anybody that's supplied with them that would be good in our position.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. You might go in the Bay County.
Vernon, Vernon is advertising right now for an assistant clerk. They, they might get some great applicants, you know, that we can feed off if they don't hire that person, you know?
I don't know what, put my waiter in that aisle still. She might be good for the dog.
Right on. You have any thinking about what we're gonna put on there?
Uh... I would, I would, that's a good idea to put in, uh, in the senior chair.
So, we send for one, just nice and dry to hear the fat mouth.
No.
No, that is...
I do it three times a week.
Thank you guys. I gotta go.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for killing, Ms. Carter.
You're good, sir. Have a good night.
But it'll work out. Within, within six months, we'll have all done.
Yeah, you're friendly, go say, exactly. You scored here, we all.
I'm so glad, I'm so glad. I'm so glad she gone. And he said, yeah, Eddie and I talked about it. I said, I had a dream. I said, you know what? He said, yes, I had a dream. When we told him, Margaret said, we don't need you anyway. Just go in the house. He said, I swear, Margaret, I did. Make it my, make sure, right, left possibility.
Okay, anything else? I mean, we, we can just, um, our, our back minds, our brains will start doing now on, on how we're going to approach this over the coming weeks and months. And we probably need to have one or two workshops on this. And when we do those quarter things, we're still doing them without the other people we need to, need to concentrate. And if you could, you and Marcy both, I would like you to run to us things that we need to know with those, those couple of workshops and, and things we need to be, need to be keen on. Uh, I suppose for the record, we need a motion to set that as, uh, retirement, uh, resignation, uh, retirement request.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second option. We have a motion second. Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? And the sheriff votes yes. Okay, Ms. Judy, did you have anything for us tonight? Did you have anything else?
Uh-uh.
Okay, you're back. Ms. Judy?
Do you think we have a Harper grant?
Harper.
Harper?
Harper.
Harper?
Yeah.
About putting up a sign down here?
Oh, that's, that's a COVID grant, yeah. But we're all going with that. It's, it's very, we just sent them pictures this week of the house. They want pictures of our house out there and all that. We've signed the contract and it's fixing to go. We're gonna get a sign. We're gonna get the house redone and all that.
You're gonna remodel this house?
That's what they said. When, when the project starts, we make an approach to state about, you know, demo and, but Mr. Fox doesn't think that'll happen. He thinks we're gonna have to remodel that one. So, we're gonna approach. Yeah, we're gonna approach. It's when the time comes.
You gonna back out on it? Can we back out, and not have to remodel?
And we'll fit it there, I guess, we...
If the money they give us, we'll remodel it, and we can put a duck officer in, I, I think we'd be better to do, to be able to, you, I agree with you on that, but if we can remodel it within the money, I'd rather do that than, than back out, but, uh, you know.
We got one point four four million dollars to redo that.
Yeah.
But I'd say, you know...
Even a million dollars, I'm good for anymore.
No, it doesn't have.
Anything else?
No.
Ms. Fox, any, no, I don't have any. One thing that I couldn't remember, you've got, started talking, that I have, is that I have sent, uh, I have forwarded an email to Margaret, and she has forwarded it on to Fred Fox, I got a letter from the Florida League of Mayors, got an email from the Florida League of Mayors, about some infrastructure money that is, uh, come along, we ought to be informing the grants, and we may need to think about, if there's anything there that we can, getting our name in the pot. I also sent it to, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Avery at the E D C, Development Council, because you remember one time he said, one of the things that was difficult about us being able to get, uh, industry in here was water, sewer, something like that, I don't think we can put sewer in here for, for any single business, and I don't think we can put sewer in here on the income of the people of the community, but if there's anything else in there, maybe we can put a, a package plan, but anything we can do that would enhance us, make it a business or something like that, so I sent that on to Mr., uh, Mr. Avery, and sent it to Margaret, who sent it on to Mr. Fox. Anything else from anyone? All right, we stand adjourned, uh, so you, can we, can we re-see this, or you have to advertise that meeting, this meeting anyway?
Yeah, not yet, we're not, we're...
We just, we're adjourned.
Yeah.
We'll stand adjourned, thank you all for coming.
Where's the duty go?
Yes, sir.